In person. For tonight's town of one all playing board meeting, this Wednesday, August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, first item on our agenda is a roll call. I think we're all present today. We have Mr. Beckett, we've got Dave Thompson, we've got Michael Stella, we've got John McIntosh, we're self-fulled up, we've got Lisa Buck, we've got, uh, still learning your name, Ashley Case, and we've got Bob there. And Krista Schwitzer is, uh, participating remotely, uh, this evening, and we're gonna get into remote policy in a little bit, but, uh, there's a roll call next up is acceptance of the agenda. Can I get a motion, please? I'm second. I mean, actually, we are gonna change things around because we were given a remote participation policy. We're gonna include that under other new business this evening, and we're gonna move other new business, uh, up to number, I guess, three A, uh, right after approval of the minutes, so. Any, any comments on that? Very good. We have a, um, motion in a second with that change. All those in favor? That's right, because, yeah, because of, okay.
Yeah, because we have one for roll matter.
Got it.
Okay. We're back to roll twelve votes. And for the approval of the agenda, John Beckett?
Yes.
Michael Costello?
Yes.
Ashley Case?
Yes.
Apologies. File seven voting numbers because everyone's here, or does everyone vote?
Yeah, just the seven four numbers.
Okay. Apologies, Ashley. Lisa Buck?
Yes.
John McIntosh?
Yes.
Phil Ruh?
Yes.
Dave Thompson?
Yep.
Krista Schwitzer?
Yes.
The seven four.
Very good. Uh, next up is approval of the minutes of July twenty-one, uh, twenty-one. Can I get a motion? Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Edits? Krista?
I have none this time. I'm good.
The others? Jessica, awesome job. Wow.
Thank you.
That's great. Uh, so with, with no changes, uh, let's carry on again.
Right, for the approval of the minutes from the July twenty-twenty-one meeting. John Beckett?
Oh.
Michael Costello?
Approved.
Lisa Buck?
Yes.
John McIntosh?
Yep.
Phil Ruh?
Yes.
Dave Thompson?
Yeah, I cannot, because he was absent last.
That's right, he was not with us. Thank you for reminding me. Uh, Krista Schwitzer?
Yes.
That's six-four with one abstaining because he was absent.
Thank you, Jessica. Uh, next up, we, again, we're gonna have, this is in other new business, we're gonna discuss the remote participation policy that was recently adopted by the town council to address how we're going to proceed, uh, with, with our, our public meetings. So Kyle, can we summarize this, please?
Yeah, so, um, this remote policy is, uh, sort of the, the rules and the policy that we've been following the last couple of meetings. Um, it basically spells out this hybrid style where, uh, board members, um, are generally encouraged to come in-person to meetings, but, um, you know, for whatever reason, uh, if they want or need to, uh, participate remotely, they have that option, and, um, they need to let the chair know, and, um, you know, it spells out the chair should, should generally be in person. Um, and, you know, it talks about a few different things as far as, like, what we were just doing with the roll calls, um, for the, uh, votes, and, um, you know, different sorts of advertising requirements as far as, you know, having a link for the public to participate either remotely or in person. Um, so basically, all the stuff we've already been doing, it's just that each of the, the different boards within the town need to adopt the policy to recognize it. So it's not really changed anything we're doing, it's just kind of a formal practice to, uh, kind of finalize it. Uh, but if anyone has any questions, I do believe that the town manager should be on the call, um, so if anyone had any questions, you can jump in and fill in some more of the details, I think.
Thank you, Kyle. I did have one question, because under, uh, section three, uh, you know, it, it talks about the reasons, and it doesn't specifically say, I mean, a lot of the, obviously, what we're doing is as a result of COVID, but, I mean, it's not explicit, and, and, you know, I know this policy must, must have been a little bit more generic, cover all kinds of things, but I, I would assume that, uh, COVID reasoning, it's similar to, you know, why Krista is not participating, that that is included. I, I know that's in there, but it, you know, it was, it was fairly general on number one, and number two, you know, the reasons, uh, permissible reasons for remote participation.
Yeah, I believe any sort of COVID-related reason, whether you have a pre-existing condition or you are just, um, a more vulnerable population, or you have some larger concern, or, you know, just, you don't want to attend because of, of that situation, um, that fairly certainly is the intent that that covers that, and then it's up to the, the chair of whatever board to, um, kind of finalize and agree to whatever reason a board member might have for not coming. So, uh, as long as you felt that satisfied, uh, you know, one of those one or two in some capacity, um, then I think it would be fine.
I wanna be clear with, with the board. Krista brought up this question to me before we, I had seen this policy, and I, I have absolutely no issues, uh, with board members requesting remote participation, uh, due to health reasons, due to concerns about the, the, the coronavirus, none whatsoever. So, you know, i- in the short term, I mean, I, I've mentioned to Krista that, you know, I, I watched a couple, uh, town council meetings and noticed that, you know, three of the council members at any given time, maybe four, uh, had participated remotely, and, I mean, they're, you know, I, I have, you know, extreme flexibility, just, you know, give me a good reason. I just, you know, we need to have documentation why you might not be comfortable, uh, being in this room. Glad to see that we had masks. Lisa reminded me today by email, and I'm glad she did, because I missed it.
Yeah.
I didn't think I was gonna be here this evening, but, um, we are. But I did, I wanna be really clear with, with the board members, that, you know, it's up to you. You just tell me if you have a concern, the Delta variant is a, is a serious issue, and, you know, tell things, normalize a little bit. You just let me know, we'll figure it out. The remote option clearly works, uh, fairly well. It just set up as, uh, leaps and bounds that are, you know, better than, than what we had the last time. But, uh, moving forward, you know, things get a little bit more serious than they already are. Just let me know, and we'll, we'll figure it out. I appreciate Krista participating remotely. We have that option, but you, just, just speak up, okay? You know, your, your safety is, is my concern now. We're a volunteer board, uh, so, that's just for a minute. Any questions for, for Kyle or Sophia? That's it, because I'm on the line.
The only question I have is also a question, because, as I read this, when you're away from work, you could attend as well, because it's just temporary absence from jurisdiction, jurisdiction. I gotta advise to you, that's a good question. Now, now that I sort of want to.
Right, so I mean, I think it, it does, in the, you know, prior to number one, circumstances in which physical presence for one or more members is not practical, may include, but it's not necessarily limited to the following. So, um, yeah, I think there's room there to, um, allow for other sorts of special circumstances other than necessarily, um, like emergencies or...
Well, it says for temporary absence from the jurisdiction.
Right.
Which says, if I'm away for any reason.
Right.
And I can't get to the meeting.
Right, I think so. I think as long as it wasn't, uh, I moved away for the next, you know, six months, I'm not going to attend any meeting. I, I think if it was, I mean, at that point, then it might get up to the chair to kind of make some sort of, you know, this isn't a special circumstance anymore. It's, um, but yeah, I think there is room for, if you aren't available for whatever reason, they could do it remotely.
So if I move to church and take us for six months?
I, that's up to...
All right. It's all right. Hey, to carry that farther, uh, I, I have this, the occasional meeting for the travel. I, if we have a meeting next month, I will not be able to attend, but I just wanna be clear that if I miss a meeting, I could participate, uh, participate remotely, but not chair, and then I would have to designate a chair, because you expect the chair to be, uh, to be present, correct?
I believe so. Yeah, that's all I understand.
Right, because I actually thought of that, but forgot about it, but just brought it out, and then, so there, there might be occasions if, if we miss meetings and, you know, travel for work, occasion, and, but I can at least listen in and participate in the meeting, but my, me on voice to her. Good question. Other, other questions?
Phil? This is Belle, the voice from the dark. Um, I just want to remind everybody that you're wearing masks and that you are not actually chatting with each other, you are enunciating to a microphone. So, um, mostly you guys are pretty clear, but usually kind of at the tail end of what you're saying, you, you tail off a little bit, and it gets harder to understand. So I wanna make sure that as everybody is speaking, they understand that it's that microphone about eighteen feet away from you that, um, is what you're really trying to project to, not your neighbor, um, that you really would like to turn and speak to.
Thanks for that reminder. We're, we're gonna need to be trained on the, the newer setup. Thank, thank you, Belle. Other, other comments? Very good. So we, again, motion, yeah. So can I get a, a motion? For the planning board, get our board to accept, you know, I get it, Kyle, it's like each board has to, so, can I get a motion?
No motion.
Further discussion? Jessica?
That, Michael Costello in second.
Yes.
Hey, for the adoption of the revote meeting policy, John Beckett?
Yes.
Michael Costello?
Yes.
Lisa Buck?
Yes.
John McIntosh?
Yep.
Phil Ruh?
Yes.
Dave Thompson?
Yeah.
Krista Schwitzer?
Yes.
That's four.
Very good, thank you, Jessica. Uh, next up, uh, under new business, we have one, uh, public hearing this evening. It was a minor site plan review for Orno Economic Development Corporation located at one fifty-three Taylor Road, Tax Map nine dash zero, lot five in the force, Maga, help to district, the application for development of the Cherboog Bog Trail Center, which would be classified as a public and a nonprofit recreational facility. Can I have a, uh, the applicant come up and, and explain the project for us, please?
Please do, except based on that last thing, I'm gonna run home and do this proposal. Thank you. Uh, my name's Bob Bass. I'm on the Orno Economic Development Corporation of Exeter Frasier. Uh, a couple of your members are, or at least one, anyways. Um, with me tonight is Gary Frost, he's the architect who designed the plans for us and, and also worked through all the bid specs, so we, we've got an actual bid package with a lot of the general contractors. It's a, I'm kinda jumping around, I apologize. It's a federal grant that we won, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar federal grant through the, uh, recreational trails program, which happens to be monies from the federal highway, the ministry, go to, to ministers through major parks and lakes. That was awarded in, uh, January of this year, and that gave us a green light.
Hi, very good question. Yeah, Dave, Dave did bring this up, yeah, again, he, he was on the, the board, so I had to say that it's simple for this, uh, this project. If he accuses himself, he can participate as a number of...
Well, I like those, one of my voting, yeah, stacking the deck.
Uh, thank you.
So anyways, that's a bit of the background. I'm happy to answer more questions. So in, uh, around twenty-eighteen, I don't know if you folks are familiar with this state-of-the- property. It's on, uh, Taylor Road, ironically. Um, go straight, don't take a left on Putland to the landfill. There were forty-three acres there, and, uh, essentially one connected building, one, one ranch that's very serviceable and a connected, uh, annex that they use for refrigeration and worm storage, uh, in the worm pack. But they were ready to retire and wanted, uh, wanted to sell. It was on the open market. It could have been sold into, for residential purposes. Um, I think you see from the map there, it's just centrally located within the Cherboog Bog Conservation Area, surrounded by existing trails, high utilization, uh, land trust, Orno Land Trust is very active there, the Penobso Valley Ski Club is very active there, primarily in the winter, rooming for public recreation, all of this at no cost. Um, so anyways, this opportunity came available. I, I ski out there, recognized, you know, what would be lost if it went into, back into private, you know, somebody built a nice home, it's got a beautiful south-facing view, and, uh, you know, it could be not necessarily posted, but it'd have a obstacle, not necessarily an obstacle, but it'd be, it was an opportunity to turn this into an outdoor system. Um, the land trust had been for several years, and Dave knows the history, wanting the, it has four ponds, two major ponds and two minor ponds, kind of mirror inages, uh, on either end of the property. The land trust had, for many years, wanted to purchase this from the seller, uh, but the seller was always interested in buying, in selling the whole package. So, and hence the land trust would get grant money, which would only be based on the value of the land they wanted. They couldn't get grant money to buy the building. So Orno Economic Development offered to step in and basically facilitate this. We bought the property from the sellers, forty-three acres, and about a year later, twenty-nineteen, uh, the land trust got the funds and purchased thirty-six acres and the four ponds back from us. So that left Orno OEDC with roughly seven, seven and a half acres in the middle here, and the building, an existing park, gravel park. Uh, so that was, that's kind of the big history, and then from there, last summer was spent writing this grant, and, uh, boom, we, we, uh, we got the award. So now the work starts. We have to fundraise, um, for the balance, um, of what the project will cost. Current estimations, uh, we haven't obviously got any bids in yet, but I'm, while parking in at two-hundred-and-twenty-five to two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. So we've gotta raise at least a hundred thousand dollars, which will be through, uh, you know, private users as well as approaching, say, the Leaper Foundation and, and, uh, Main Community Foundation, Alfon, that type of situation, of getting, uh, a significant... So that's, yeah, I guess I want, so that's the background. I think from the, from the maps, you probably are generally familiar with where this property is located. If there's any questions on that, I, I can address. Um, so that's the history. Um, I might add at this point, one of the things that was, I think, valuable both to OEDC and ultimately in the town is this, uh, supports are, were weaved into at least three points of the town's comprehensive plans, the local state, makes together. Uh, one is, uh, uh, section two, anyway, this is all in volume two, but is, is to expand the recreational base of Orno, uh, particularly recreational, outdoor recreation. Uh, second one is to protect the Cherboog Bog for a number of things, including recreation, preserve recreation, and three, under parks and rep, uh, use existing, use, use recreational assets as a economic incentive for socio, socioeconomic impact for the town, and then connect more trail systems. So, all of this is happening. Um, and this is the side of the fore, I forget it. Uh, we just about finalized a memorandum of understanding between OEDC, the land trust, OLT, and the Penobso Valley Ski Club to make a three-year trial, if you will, subcommittee with the zone board to manage this facility and see what plays out. How is it best gonna be structured? Should it go out of OED's hands and somebody else buy it? Uh, what is the best manual structure? Could be this, these three players continue to do that. But those players will, uh, out of their, out of their volunteer staff, uh, student members, will help staff this facility. It does not have to be open for the RTP grant. It does not have to be open every day, uh, seasonal or based on usage. So that's, that's the concept. I think it will evolve. There can be some other, um, functions and events up there as well. We don't envision, uh, of this, yeah. We, we can't charge trail fees because land trust, uh, mission and, and the public use, it's, it's, uh, historic out there, but we may in fact, uh, have a membership just to the facility for community members to support operations. Uh, as far as this committee's concerned, um, there's gonna be no other, well, a little gray area, talking to Kyle. Um, there's no change to the physical footprint, the square footage of the ground. However, we are in, I don't think this is a before picture, but on the right-hand building, where the, the facade that goes straight up in the middle, that, that's new. It was, it's continuing up from the, from a one-floor level. And we're at, right now, everything on the right-hand side of the building is a flat roof. So we wanna eliminate that by adding, uh, a shedroom down the entire backside across. The left-hand building is the, is the outdoor center. It's a nineteen, late nineteen-eighties ranch, uh, two-by-six construction, and trust, trust roof, uh, roofing is ideal. The whole space can be opened up without any, uh, carrying loads. So that's the intent, is to have a wide-open space. There'll be some tables like this for people to, and chairs, maybe a cup or two. You know, somebody will, somebody at park, go in there with their kids, change shoes and boots, put them in the cubby, go for a ski or bike, um, or walk or whatever, you know, lift the back, have, have a snack, go back out, whatever. So that's the intent. Parking area, um, at this, at this stage, we're gonna not expand it. There's a gravelled area in front and then kind of straight back. You can kind of see from the top hole. Uh, there's probably parking for thirty-odd vehicles there now. My, part of my intent also, uh, give the parent them, uh, there's an existing parking lot now off the putter, and on a Saturday, the land building's open, so a family can show up there, start unloading kids and dogs, then somebody's on the way to the, to the trailer. That parking space will certainly remain, but I wanna, uh, focus this parking and say, that would become overfill. Parking, because this will take all that congestion off Thunder Road and put it safely out from the devil's door. Uh, parking? Yeah, okay. Went over the roof, and the, the facility does have a, an existing well and septic. With some concern over the, is the, uh, existing of the septic tank, but we had a guy out there earlier to, uh, locate the water line, and also we had a ground-penetrating radar, uh, thing, and, and effectively identified the septic tank in, in Leachville where, where we had this a basis. I think that's really all I have. If you, I have a set of plans, if anybody else needs them, hopefully, look it over. Um, yeah, can we open it, questions, or?
Uh, in just a minute.
Yes.
Late to the, uh, our, our town staff provides us thorough reviews. Kyle, it was pretty straightforward. Do you have anything to add based on your summary?
Just a little more from the, the Ordnance side, just to summarize it. I mean, the lot is located in the, the forest and agriculture districts. Um, there is a bit of, um, the south side of the lot located in the, the limited residential shoreline area, um, but that doesn't really extend, um, even through the whole parking area, um, near the building. So, um, the proposed, uh, deck area and, and dios, and any of the proposed additions or changes would be happening outside of that shoreline area, so that doesn't really raise any questions. Um, we would consider a trail center like this a, a public or nonprofit recreational facility from a use perspective, which is allowed in the forest and agriculture district, um, with really only the, the deck being added as a more structural addition to the exterior. Uh, it doesn't raise any setback concerns with the, either the Taylor Road property line or the, the north property line with the, the wireless, uh, facility there. Um, as far as sewer management, drainage, impact on natural areas, um, there really isn't too much concern. There's still going to be, uh, quite a bit of vegetated cover around the existing impervious area, and while the deck is being added, I think it's mostly over, um, sort of what's part of that gravel parking area at this point. So you're not really adding more impervious area, even though you're adding some, I think around five hundred square feet to that. Five to six hundred. Um, so there isn't really that much more addition, if any, uh, actual impervious area did. Uh, I think the faculty showed some signage and some of the conceptual drawings, but that was more of a, a concept. Um, it's, as we had discussed, uh, there isn't at this time any actual, uh, in, intend for any proposed signage, uh, so that's why I see that as one of the, the recommendations in the, um, in the report, uh, that it would simply have to abide, as it's for time, by, you know, what the science allowance is in the forest and agriculture district. Um, as far as traffic concerns, the parking area would be considered currently a legally non-conforming parking area, um, which could continue to exist, um, so long as it wasn't expanded. Um, you know, that would be part of, you know, in, in the future, if there was to be an expansion of the parking area, there would have to be some other things looked at, but without that expansion, um, it can really remain as is. Uh, speaking with the, the fire department, they didn't have any problems with any access. Uh, other staff didn't see any issues either. Yeah, but at this point, there were really no other questions. Other staff, I'm happy to answer any questions of course, that's what I have.
Before we open it up for public hearing, there was just that question from the board, just a quick clarification. Is making a non-conformant parking is due to, to, to shore, et cetera? Is that?
No.
Why is it non-conform?
So, the fact that there aren't necessarily delineated spaces, and if there were, as, yeah, you mentioned, there's potentially... And if there were, as, yeah, you mentioned, there's potentially twenty, thirty vehicles that it could accommodate. Any parking area over, if we were to make a new parking area right now, any parking area over ten spaces is required to be paved. Uh, whereas this is a gravel parking area. So if you were to, uh, you know, add on to this, then it raises, you know, some question of, does some or all of this parking area then have to be paved? If you're over twenty spaces, it starts requiring a certain number of trees throughout the parking area to be, um, things like that would have to start to be, to be okay. But as it is, it's been, been existence and wouldn't, it can continue that non-conforming use.
You can have the intent to provide, you know, it might be obvious. It might be obvious to, you know, where people are going to park, but just small signs, you know, maybe just to delineate it.
Well, I mean, to help that effort or is it just fairly obvious? I mean, in the winter, there'll be snowplains combined. But yeah, I mean, somehow the, the most efficient parking will be the, not parallel, uh, back straight in and out, just to, to line them up that way. Uh, to be honest, uh, no signage on, uh, yet it could well be, they would park here and arrows.
Yeah.
Uh, I think over time it'll become obvious to users, uh, although that's not necessarily fair. Most users. There will be, um, the building has, anyways, most of the parking will be low, if you will. There's a, uh, existing road is actually a loop up around the building. And closest to the, the, the deck and the ADA ramp will be a lot for a handicap, reserved for handicapped. Or perhaps pick up and drop off. Other than that, will no doubt lead to a handicap. And I do apologize, I didn't need to mislead the board when I said no expansion of the footprint. In my mind, uh, a deck. But yes, we're adding a deck. And gosh, if you've not been out there, it's a south, due south-facing property. And the deck is on the south side. And all the, all the windows are on the south side. So it really will be a nice asset to the town and, and hopefully to the area. That's Lisa, that's all I get.
No worries. Um, I, 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 you said that, uh, that sports ski trails a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, frequently I've heard people come up from Portland to ski there. So I do wonder, as this, you know, when, when word gets out about whether the, you know, what is your capacity in terms of sponsor?
Well, again, I, I think if we become whole, and perhaps that's one of the volunteers, with the building open, it'll be set. That's been accepted by the three parties, uh, needs. And maybe perhaps that's something that the, you know, the, the volunteer can do is say parking lot full, turn around and go to the, the overflow, which will be existing. I mean, Anna, she's right, Anna, even right now, maybe the park is not right now. But in the winter, on a Sunday, Saturday or Sunday, there's a lot of vehicles.
Yeah, and it's grown, so that's.
Yeah, and when the ski club that has to go up, everything will remain, you know, user-free. We envision a donation box or something inside, but no one, anybody can use the facility. And if they want to join as a member or donate, that's great, but, uh, it's a public facility.
Um, so I, I think it's important to, to look at it too as there's the trail center, which is being the proposed use, and then there's the trail system as a whole. And it's hard to, while the trail center could be considered an asset for the overall trail system and a reason that someone might come, the trail center itself isn't necessarily responsible for supplying parking and access for the entire trail system. So, uh, I'm sure we're on that line, but yeah, it's just something to keep in mind.
I might add also along that line, I mean, this, as you probably all know, this, this could be accessed from the Bangor City Forest. And what is it, the Walden Park to the south of that. And there's a, and there's parking, uh, in Old Town on the Kirkland Road. So people, yes, they. Grand Road. Is there, is there parking there? That's the development or?
South pole side at the end of the track.
Yeah. Okay. So I mean, there's other, there are other locations for parking to access the rest.
I have the same comment, cause you've mentioned you didn't envision any increase in traffic. But again, if you build a nice facility, uh, you might need those expansions. But I, I, I think it sounds like if, if that, uh, need arises, then you'll.
You might, you might come back before us and maybe, maybe it'll just. No, exactly. I mean, that's, well, we've had that discussion and to be honest, uh, my focus, our focus has been to, to get this building built behind us and see what the usage demands. And, and you're right, I hope in two years, I'm back here saying, these would really like to expand our parking here. This is how we propose and use somebody, somebody like your facilities to, uh, your professionals. To, to design, uh, like, at this point is, you know, it's sufficient.
Got another question on this, this subject field? You mentioned you had somebody evaluated, you provided copies of the plans.
Yes.
But, I mean, I'm just thinking, depending on usage, if you have, again, a, a weekend with a, a full house, say, uh, you, you know what the capacity of that is? And did you, your, your person that walked around, you said afterward was, was looking at the site. You know if it has ample capacity for number of people.
Well, the, the tanks a thousand, yeah. For the, for those, yeah, I mean, for the, uh, approved. I can envision if we had, you know, perhaps it'd have to be pumped once in, once or twice a year, once in the winter and once in the summer. Long range, it might be nice, and I guess I could see me again, but to, to put an outdoor vault toilet somewhere in the parking area for those times when the buildings close and, uh.
Kyle, would that be something, so if they did that modification, if you have the signage, it said in your review, would have to go before, uh, code staff just to review that? So something like adding a, or, or something, is that anything in this board needs to be concerned about? Or can that be dealt with by town staff?
Yeah, so, um, the ordinance is, uh, it, it gives some room for the code officer to approve, uh, minor changes to site plans that don't affect the, um, decision and findings made by the planning board. So something smaller scale like that, um, which wouldn't really impact any of the, the larger decisions the board's making. Um, yeah, could most likely be done at the, the staff level. If it was a whole large structure with multiple bathrooms and something like that, that might come.
That might be an additional condition of approval. Cause right now, there's, there's one recommendation by staff that specifies signage. And that that will be reviewed by town staff. So I just wanted these minor changes.
Right.
That may, uh, included, if we just have that as a condition.
I think it could be a condition. Um, if it wasn't a condition, yeah, they would still have to come forward for that permitting. And when they did, it would be reviewed and if it was determined that, oh, this is an amendment from the original site plan, then it would be triggered to go back to the planning board anyway. But making something a condition of approval doesn't really hurt the decision. So it's, it's not, so, uh, the signage I specifically called out, um, because it seemed like something that was more likely, and there was some signage shown, uh, but wasn't really happening at this town. Um, that's actually specifically from, either way, I think it's.
So that could be the septic system. I'm not sure what that was designed for. It could have been thrown for a commercial purpose if they were washing things and doing that, not necessarily residential.
We honestly don't know any more than, than what the septic plan says. Um, so Leachfield, I mean, I guess a Leachfield with varying size depending on.
Yeah, whether it's residential or different uses. I just wanted to make sure.
I don't know, I, and they, this, the single bathroom, there'll be a urinal and a, and a, unisex ADA bathroom. So, you know, use, I, I, you know, I don't know. And I think that's, perhaps that's something that in a year's time or two years' time, with usage, we find out this. The Leachfield is insufficient, there's plenty of room there to expand, so. If you visit, I'd be visiting, you guys again, or somebody. And by the way, I shouldn't have thrown up that thought for the fact of way creatures. But that just would be a nice thing I could see, you know, from the building. The money, so the time, the, to pick them up.
Other, other questions before we open it up for public hearing?
Yeah, kind of a follow-up on Lisa's question. So you, you haven't, I mean, I guess maybe clarification. You don't have a projection for how much of an increase you think you might see? Kind of thinking of, so we, we ski as well. Um, we, when we're looking for something a little bit more intense with a, a center for a child who go to Waterville. And they get pretty significant traffic in that, I think it's relatively maybe in the last five years. But they saw a pretty significant increase in traffic in terms of parking and use because of the central that they put in, which is kind of analogous to that. So there's not been any kind of analysis done about increased use?
To be, uh, quite frankly, uh, I mean, I, I, but I'll be honest, I, I hope there's increased use and it's a drop. I mean, my order of economic development hat, our thought is somebody will come from away, ski for half a day, go downtown, have a meal, a, not a beer, drive home, but a meal and a beverage. And, you know, so there's a little, it's not, and they will prove anyway. I guess some of my other grants, I said, it's not like any water park, but I think it has the potential to, to be a socioeconomic driver as well as an asset to the town as far as people perhaps wanting to live. Do you want to, but I'm, I'm dancing around the question that really, I think we did not look at that. I just looked at existing numbers and, you know, right now, it's all been handled with the button. So this now creates two venues for parking. And in addition, there was other, someone incoming. And that's another nice thing about the center, the parking back in Bangor, make it a half-day trip. Have a picnic and just go, go back or come down the road.
Very good question. I, I do want to emphasize, Bob made that point earlier, but this, this was specifically brought up. And it's part of our comprehensive plan process that we went through years ago. Uh, many of you were, were part of that and trying to create that, that, uh, destination is, is a goal, so. But, you know, if, if this flies and we get more people, I mean, I would assume that we, it's a Mr. Bass again. But very good point, is that the yurt down in Waterville, it, it was, yeah, there's a lot of people down there. Very nice facility. Then we can have that one. Other questions from the board? Jessica, I know. Open up the public hearing and, uh, uh, Belle, are there any people online?
There are not.
Dave is a member of the public, I believe. He might have something to say. All right. Belle, can you hear Danny or should he go up, up to the podium?
Well, there's no microphone at the podium, so wherever he is, it doesn't really matter. Um, he's difficult to hear.
Should I, a little more of a background on the whole area. Probably twenty years ago, the owner land trust realized that property in town, the center, decided to dwell, but the town really, yeah, went off in this area and found obviously this, uh, parking lot. Over the past twenty years, we've asked, uh, we've, we've, uh, been, uh, advanced the cost base, so on. A lot of it is owned by, I also got, um, some of the pounds, some of the, some, uh, person. Through the middle of this, if they go, they share with that. They have spent the last five years, right, for thousands, thousands of dollars. And now you can go surfing all, all the way through the banks and forests and mountains. That's just a little bit of that, John, the, the area is there because the owner land trust, you know, is, is, of course. The, this area is really, not only an accommodation area, but it has an area, a very good habitat. Animals and birds are there. Another, other comment I have is on the parking. Right now, if you go up there on a Sunday or Saturday afternoon in the winter especially, cars are all coming down this, uh, the water, all the way out on the tailpipe. So the town, parking, it's just on the scent. This is the old, uh, old ABC of the parking lot. So my people down, they, they realize that. There's a little parking lot, but the owner land trust, they don't, they don't. And sometimes you sit up there, and the town's trying to follow roads, people got to find all the roads, and all the roads. So that's what they took, uh, the parking lot. The town shouldn't be doing any of the inspections away from ABC. And then this box has, and when it's done, it's been, finds a area, it's lost.
So, Bob, construction timing is all dependent on.
Right. Uh, yeah, not in, fully understanding that the, all the plug is at the, at the call of, of you folks. But in the interest of time, we had, we published, uh, August seventh, eighth, I guess, in the BDN. Again, all this is all part of the, of the RTP grant requirement. You have to advertise public bid. And then, so the bid due date is now September twenty-second. So September twenty-second, we'll have a open, uh, it's a sealed bid submitted and we'll open the bids. And then it's up to, quite honestly, up to the contractor's availability, which everyone knows is, uh, difficult. Um, we have some interest, I mean, this is a project that potentially could be sided and roofed and windowed before snow and then all the interior work done over there. But that's optimistic. I mean, it won't, it won't be a use this, this way. Regardless, unless it's still taken.
But to complete the, the entire project, I said, we need, I don't know, upwards of a hundred thousand bucks, but we can get started.
Yes, and I should clarify that, order economic does, or OEDC doesn't necessarily want to, but we have the physical capacity to, to fund the project. And that's something expressed to, uh, to contractors. It's not, it's not a function of, are you going to be able to raise enough matching dollars? The goal is to raise enough matching dollars to reimburse OEDC for what they're out of policy. And the grant is reimbursed, reimbursable. So if it's only three draws, um, and the third draw is like five or 10% remaining, so there'll be some big draws in the middle that OEDC will have to care. But the board has voted, uh, to do.
Uh, other questions? Belle, anybody online?
Still no.
Further questions from the board? Are they going to close the public hearing? Jessica, uh, last, last call for questions, I, I. Personally, this is, it matches up so nicely with, with what we talked about at length, with the comprehensive plan. I think it had a fairly low impact out there, I, I just think it would be a tremendous amenity for the town, many of us use, use that area, so. Very, very nice project. All right, uh, I, I think we did add, you know, perhaps one recommendation, if, if we were to consider other minor changes, as long as. Town staff, uh, approve those. Believe we're ready for a motion.
No finding of that?
Actually, time is a fact first, that's good.
We should hand you one.
Yeah.
Next one is.
No, no, I'm not.
Very good, again, these are proposed findings of fact the board considered, the O E D C Development Corporation. Site plan review dated August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one, pursuant to Article six, section eighteen, dash, one seventy-seven, the O E code one, this is the O E planning boards considered the application. O E Economic Development Corporation for Public and Non-Profit Recreational Facility located in Taxman. Nine-dash-zero, block five, and four, some agriculture district, and based on all evidence presented by the applicant, the D A C and C town departments. And the public found the following, number one, requirements of the district that the proposed recreational facilities and allow them to force an agriculture. District, and that the application is primarily for a change of use, which involves minor exterior improvements and additions, and that the proposed use will continue to meet all requirements. For setbacks and locked dimensions, are there any issues with that? Uh, number two, compliance with town ordinances and codes that the proposed use meets the provisions of applicable regulations. The town, including all pertinent sections of chapter eighteen, land use ordinance, are there any issues with that? Number three, utilization of the site, that the proposed change of use will involve minor structural additions and expansion to the. Impervious area beyond existing conditions, and that all environmentally sensitive areas on the site will be avoided and preserved to a maximum extent. Are there any issues there? And number four, traffic and pedestrian access. The proposed use will utilize an existing gravel parking area that will offer an alternative option for people visiting the surrounding trail system. Use is not anticipated to create additional traffic on Taylor Road, but no, however, provide a safer access. Access alternatives for vehicles and pedestrians by avoiding conflict with the rules of traffic on public road. Any comments there? Five, storage of materials, there will be no exposed storage of materials. Uh, stormer management, I do want to remind you, we really prepared this, but there was information submitted in our packet. By a licensed engineer stating that there will be essentially no, no adverse impact on this project. Clarify that, so number six, stormer management, if the vegetated areas surrounding the existing impervious area will remain. And provide a buffer to any surrounding water bodies, and that no additional runoff will be created, as the minor structural additions will take place primarily. Over existing impervious area, any issues there? Uh, number seven, erosion control, that no erosion control measures are anticipated due to the project being primarily a change of use to the existing structure, but the best management. Practices will be followed, uh, that's management practices be followed, should any impacts realized on site are any issues with that? And nine, eight, water supply and sewage disposal, the site is already served by on-site water supply and sewage, sewage disposal. Uh, number nine, utilities, the proposed change of use does not require any changes to existing utilities, other than upgrades, the wiring, the lighting, the installation of a heat pump. Didn't care about the heat pump, but uh, well. Right? Any issues with that? Uh, the ten natural features, that no natural feature will be impacted as part of the proposed use itself, the removal of one tree located close to the structure. Any problems there? The letter groundwater, and surface water, protection, that the proposed development and use will not address the impact, quality. Or quantity of groundwater available to the site properties, which can cover water supply systems, any issues? Twelve, hazardous, special, and radioactive materials, use of the site is not involved, handling, storage, use, hazardous, special, or radioactive materials, will there be that? Uh, thirteen, shoreline relationship, that a portion of the law is located within limited residential shoreline zone, or with no additions. The changes are proposed within this area of the law, any issue there? Uh, fourteen, solid waste management, we did not discuss, discuss this, is there any? Any proposed dumpsters, or just a trash man in the facility, I just want to make sure that. No?
Well, it's gonna be. I've, if, if a dumpster is a, uh, an issue, I mean, I could see daily, there'll, there'll be trash inside. And maybe that's one of the volunteers who needs to take that, that role, a dumpster requires a special improvement.
Typically, it's all solid waste is one of the things, you press for the site panel review, and something like that, for instance, the disarts facility, you know, they propose a dumpster, screening, all that kind of stuff. It's something that we discussed, it didn't come up, during, during your discussion.
I hadn't got that far, to be honest, uh.
I would say if I, I don't think either via commission, that if a dumpster is proposed, you know, as you screen and. Approved by the code officer, or just move back to the planning board to review, uh.
I, I would prefer to address this now, uh, so this is our opportunity, proposed findings of fact. Didn't really talk about, uh, you know, this aspect, but if there's a dumpster typically screening, are we okay? Similar to the signage requirement, that there's an addition for the dumpster, that code staff, planning staff work with the applicant to address that particular issue. Yes. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, what is screening?
Think that's something, you know, something to obscure views, it's not gonna be.
I thought you were saying the trash, so we, it would be.
No, just, uh, this stuff is.
Yeah.
So that's understood?
Yeah.
Put it in the story. All right, so, solid waste management, that the applicant additionally disposes of any solid waste generated with that. Addition, are we okay with that? Uh, fifteen, historic and archaeological resources, that the site is not known to contain historic or archaeological resources, all of that. Sixteen, financial capacity, that the applicant was awarded a matching grant two thousand twenty-one to the main department of parks and lands, and additional private funds are being raised. Okay there? And lastly, seventeen, noise and lighting, the facility will operate within the noise and light standards of town ordinances. Is everybody okay with that? Yes.
What is the outside lighting, is it, would it be on all the time?
No, I would, I would not agree with that.
Would any motion set, set to that?
We haven't proposed any R G one lighting at this point, and I, I think there would just be a, a light, well, there is a light.
There's a light over each door.
Over each door.
Carrying it.
No, no, you're proposing the light, yes.
So proposing light over each apartment store, on the wall. Nothing in the block, can I take you see that?
No, 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 uh, it lives, I mean, at this point, again, it's. We kind of that, it would be nice, but.
Yeah, right now, we're not doing any site lighting, there's existing lighting, there's existing power, phone and pole to the structure itself. And we're just going to use that existing pole, and the existing line, plus.
That, that wasn't Kyle's review, I'm just giving my part of the question, are we okay with that? Very good, uh, those are the proposed findings of fact, and now.
Uh, moved to re- approve the site plan submitted by the O E development. Republican, not by the legislature, so the public control road, tax net now not five. Followed two conditions, number one, the applicant sites have been given signage, that they obtain a history permit, and the code officer has lit inside, the requirements are such that. And the ordinance for signs located at the post, that's what I just said. Number two, there is an addition of a dumpster that the, the town staff needs, this being requirements, I'm not sure if I'm going to add the exception. Inside that?
Sure, I think that's good.
That's out of it, okay, and uh, number two, just the more generic, uh, two, the more generic, uh, there are other, other, if there are other minor, uh, sanctions. Or the staff needs those parts.
Everybody okay with that? Very good, we're going to make second for Lisa, uh, further discussion? Jessica, you're up again.
Hey, for the approval of O E C proposed projects, John Beckett? Michael Pastello?
Approved.
Lisa Ba?
Yes.
John McEnroe?
Yes.
Thora? Kristen Spencer. Krista?
Yes.
At six, four, with one of stating.
We're okay. Uh, very good, good luck.
Thank you all. You up there?
Next up, uh, discussion, Kyle, or?
Uh, we had a. subdivision application coming, uh, still in the review process, um, possibly ready for next month's review. It's a fairly small-scale cluster development, uh. That's, you know, being posed as, uh, its movements currently, uh, so, nothing like the, the major student apartment complex cluster development or anything like that. But I'll be working, uh, with that at least for the next couple of weeks, uh, and then we'll let you know if that'll be ready for the September agenda, if it's not, probably October. But if that'll be the, uh, if it does go forward, that would be the preliminary review for the subdivisions usually. Different meetings almost, so, that's the only thing currently that's coming.
Uh, just to remind, so as we move forward, depending on what happens. The variance, uh, and such, or the, a new policy says that, uh, you should try to give me a little advance notice prior to meeting, if you choose. To participate, uh, stay remotely, so it says twenty-four hours or as soon as reasonably possible, so. That, that, so, just give me a holler if you, uh, would refer to that, uh, document the reasons, so we can call on policy. Good to see you all, Stephen.
Professor, you mentioned the next one, you're, it's going to be the fifteenth?
Yeah.
You said, cause I don't live with this, but it's, I'm not.
I, I won't.
I'm gonna be in addition to the best remain.
I'm sort of a turks and terrors.
I figured it would be, I don't know if you, how you want to work that out, but.
Yeah.
It's an alternate. Or.
All of you are getting a little faint.
About that, um, there are five Wednesdays in September, so there's still two more after normal, uh, fifteen, uh. I don't know, I mean, either designate the next person as, as chair, and go with, um, who can make it, or, uh, potentially look at, uh, moving to the twenty-second.
I'm gonna be away in twenty seconds, well, Texas, so, part of Delta, so, so, but this one, I think, we should all be back.
Give, give me the. I'll, I'll be pushing.
My second, huh?
Yes. Uh, are people okay with, if we have a meeting, uh, in September, it's on the twenty-second, or?
My way, first, sorry, sure, twenty-second.
Lisa says, uh, we'll be on the twenty-second, if, if there's a, an agenda heading forward. Very good, thank you all, uh, last up is a German, let's get on motion.
I heard Lisa.
Yeah, second.
Second, thanks, Mike, Jessica, one last one.
All right, to join the August planning board meeting, John Beckett?
Yes.
Michael Pastello?
Yes.
Lisa Ba?
Yes.
John McEnroe?
Yes.
Thora?
Yes.
Dave Thompson? Kristen Spencer?
Yes.
At seven, four.
Michael, you finished, did you listen to the next one?